So, the process we've done several times, even though I only built once a year, I'll try to get through this. At this time, I would like to ask for nominations for the office of president.
I move to nominate Mark Kuchar for the office of president.
Are there any other nominations for the office of president? Are there any other nominations for the office of president? Alright, after no further nominations, I will ask motion to close nominations, which needs to be seconded.
Salute. Support.
Okay, then I put this nomination to a roll call vote as they were nominated. There is a motion to nominate Mark Kuchar for the office of president. This will be a roll call vote and done for each nomination until one is elected. Once the position is filled with a majority vote, that ends the voting for that position.
So, at this point, we can do a roll call vote.
Um, Linda Anderson?
Yes.
Mike Bauer?
Yes.
Jerry's Monahan, Chris Ravish?
Yes.
Paul Palmaville?
Yes.
Nicole Jones?
Yes.
And Mark Kuchar?
Holstein.
It passes.
Alright, at this time, Mr. Kuchar, I'd like to congratulate you on being the president. Taking over this, uh...
Process.
Thank you.
We had a, uh, roll call of who's in attendance.
Yeah, we got our positions.
Do we? Alright, we'll just continue on then. Alright. Uh, need a nomination for vice president.
I move to nominate Nicole Jones for the office of vice president. Any other nominations?
Any other nominations? Alright, if not, need a motion to close nominations, so move.
So...
Need support. Need a roll call vote.
Mike Bauer?
I think, oh, give it to me.
Oh, sorry, my bad.
Um, Mike Bauer?
Yes.
Mark Kuchar?
Yes.
Chris Ravish?
Yes.
Paul Palmaville?
Yes.
Linda Anderson?
Yes.
Nicole Jones? Yes?
You always work for yourself, that way you know you got one. Motion carries, Nicole, congratulations. Need a motion for secretary?
I move to nominate Linda Anderson for the office of secretary.
Any other nominations? Not, need a motion to close, so move. Send support. Motion for Linda Anderson for her secretary. I'll, uh, roll call vote, please.
Um, Mike Bauer?
Yes.
Mark Kuchar?
Yes.
Chris Ravish?
Yes.
Paul Palmaville?
Yes.
Nicole Jones?
Yes.
Linda Anderson?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries, congratulations, Linda. Need a motion for treasurer?
I move to nominate Mike Bauer for the office of treasurer.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Not motion to close, so move. Need support?
Support.
Alright, we have motion for Mike Bauer for treasurer. Roll call vote, please.
Um, Nicole Jones?
Yes.
Linda Anderson?
Yes.
Mark Kuchar?
Yes.
Chris Ravish?
Yes.
Paul Palmaville?
Yes.
Mike Bauer?
Yes.
Motion carries, congratulations, Mike, bless us here, thirty year dividend.
Quite.
This is Bill's legging.
Alright, thanks for the nominations, uh, we have the officers, uh, in the same positions. Uh, it was the first year for everybody in that position last year, so see if we can do any better this year. Uh, any additions, changes to the, uh, member of the agenda? Do you want to do a roll call now?
Now that it's official.
Now that it's official, alright, roll call, please.
Mike Bauer?
President.
Jared Klemitz is up here, Chris Ravish?
Here.
Paul Palmaville?
Here.
Nicole Jones?
Here.
Linda Anderson here, Mark Kuchar?
President. Now, are there any additions, additions or changes to the agenda?
Like to add a closed session for attorney-client privileges?
Support.
Any other discussion on that? Not all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Opposition, no doubt. Alright, need approval of the agenda, so move. Is support of the agenda? All's in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Alright, motion is approved. Community committees, anybody like to address the board on any of the agenda items? Anybody like to address any of the agenda items?
I'd like to address something other than an agenda item.
Uh, at this point, it has to be on the agenda, anything on the agenda, um, otherwise you can wait till the, um...
Public comment?
Public comment section or near the end. Alright, Tom, or is it okay?
Gated, you can recognize him, public comment is public comment.
Alright, go ahead, Mr. Holstein.
Okay. So, I'm sure you're all familiar with Title IX and the requirements that, uh, both boys and girls sports share similar quality, uh, athletic accommodations. Um, I believe that the only fields or playing surfaces that aren't shared by the boys and girls are the baseball field and the softball field, correct? Well, Title IX requires that those two, uh, playing surfaces, including the grandstands, uh, seating, scoreboards, fencing, be equal, right? Several years ago, there was several, um, improvements made to the boys' baseball field. Since then, there's been many promises that those same improvements are going to be done to the girls' softball field, which some have, the majority have not. Including the dugouts, which in the boys is heated, they're much larger and can accommodate a full team where the girls barely can come, uh, hold a whole team. Um, the scoreboard for the girls' softball team works intermittently, so it's difficult to use there. Um, obviously, the spectator seating is not even close to the same. So, I'm wondering, and I'm addressing the board to find out what you're going to do to rectify that before somebody does something with that, I guess. Because it's been several years and nothing's been done.
Thank you. Mike, do you want to address any of that?
Some, yeah, some of those things are, um, are being looked at. As a matter of fact, the, um, the dugouts, we, we are, um, finance committee just talked tonight about, uh, we did have some trouble with some of the bids for those, but I think we're going to move forward with the dugouts. Uh, we have a scoreboard in, in the works. I talked to Myers, they're looking at donating money to support a scoreboard along with, um, R.C. Hedrick and our booster club. So, I think we're going to have a new scoreboard in the spring, possibly the bleachers or the dugouts will be completed. Obviously, the seating was, um, is something that's going to take some time. And it's also depending on selling of the seats, I know some of those were sold in the past for the boys. But, um, it's something that we're going to have to explore. But I do know we, you know, we have the clay, we have the fencing that we've, we've done. I mean, the actual playing surface is, is pretty nice, Fred would agree with that. Some of the other surrounding things are not quite as nice as the, as the baseball. I think the board realizes that. And I think we would have had the dugouts replaced this summer if we wouldn't have been hit with such a large amount of, um, I mean, they were close to, what, eighty grand?
They were over a hundred.
Over a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, knowing that there is a large private donation to help with the baseball field, which Title IX doesn't really care where the money comes from, maybe the school should have planned ahead before they put those improvements in place. It's been years now, right? Several years that we've had an opportunity to fix this problem. And yet, we've said it's coming, it's coming, it's coming, and we still haven't done anything about it. So, keep saying it's coming, but until we see something, then it's a problem, right?
Thank you, I, you brought up a lot of valid, obviously, points. And we laid out a plan, there was a three-phase plan to do everything equally. It didn't turn out that way, uh, obviously. Like I said, scoreboard and dugouts, uh, we actually were trying to get the dugouts done beforehand. So, hopefully, uh, we'll have a few improvements for this spring, um, and we'll continue to work on that. But we've been discussing that for several months because we knew we had to get on it, but I'm glad you brought it to our attention and we'll keep on it. Um, uh, we do have the site committee that meets, if you want, you can, uh, let the office know and they'll invite you to all those, you know, when they are, specifically as opposed to having to check the website all yourself. We'll try to keep you informed on that, but thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Okay.
We'll keep on it. Anybody else like to address, uh, the board? Alright, same done. Students' partners of the month, Mr. Van Dries?
Thank you, Mr. Kuchar.
Ryan, can you come on up and join me at turn?
Our Pin County Middle School Student, it's kind of a minefield. Our Pin County Middle School Student of the Month for December is Ryan Kwalczek. Ryan is the son of Tammy and Andy Kwalczek. He was nominated by Mrs. Gilman, who says, "Ryan is an excellent student who takes his time on his work. He opens up conversations during class that interest other students. He's also very helpful to others." So, congratulations, Ryan. Keep up the good work. Congratulations, Ryan Kwalczek.
After we'll do.
Okay.
Ryan, we're going to take a picture.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Our high school student of the month for December is our student representative, Alexis Holstein. Congratulations, Alexis. She is a daughter of Tony and Trisha Holstein. She was nominated by Mrs. Palmaville, who says, "Lexi is an asset to Pin County High School. She pushes herself extremely hard academically and has excelled in advanced classes. In addition, she's involved in a variety of sports and other activities. Some of those activities include being an ambassador for our school at Youth Leadership of Bay County. She is the perfect example of a kinded, of a kind and well-rounded student." So, congratulations, Alexis.
Congratulations. Alright, consent agenda.
I'd like to make motion to accept the consent agenda and pay bills to only one million, one hundred and two thousand, forty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents.
We have motion support, any discussion? Need a roll call vote, please.
Mike Bauer?
Yes.
Nicole Jones? Chris Ravish?
Yes.
Paul Palmaville?
Yes.
Linda Anderson, yes, Mark Kuchar?
Yes.
Motion passes. Communication, Mr. View.
Thank you, Mr. Kuchar. Early middle college, I emailed the board in regards to our early middle college. If you recall, we, we had a early middle college a few years back through the Great Lakes Bay, it was called the Bleebeck. Great Lakes Bay, that was the acronym. Basically allowed our students to go take college classes, but almost they were not part of our district. They were actually became part of another entity called the Great Lakes Bay for the college. The Bay Aronak ISD, under the direction of Mr. Tom Beaterford, has now come up with a new, new, uh, program. And it's called the Bay Aronak Intermediate School Career and Technical Early and Middle College. And I, I kind of summarized it a little bit in the board packet, but next board meeting, I'd like to have the board consider signing a memo of understanding. And some of the things that the, the middle college consists of is, uh, an early college without walls for Aronak and Baynak, Bay County students. Um, early college application approval from the, they need to go and get this approved by the Michigan Department of Education. A student application process during the tenth grade year and for high school for, uh, admittance in the eleventh grade. So, the students would take this in the eleventh grade, similar to what the, actually, the prior one, they could go as early as tenth grade. There would be a thirteenth-year graduation requirement, including the final year of math as required by the Michigan Merit Curriculum. Uh, early middle college students will successfully complete a math or math-related course in the final year of high school. Programming at the Bayarnek ISD Career Center, Delta College in Davenport, along with local MNC requirements being offered and monitored at the local district level. For pupil college purposes, the collection of the FTE Record Management and Graduation Requirements will be maintained by the local district, with college tuition and fees billed directly to the local districts by the post-secondary partners. Uh, attainment of an associate's degree, industry certification, and sixty transferable credits along with possibly a Michigan transfer agreement would be the goal of the program by the end of the thirteenth, uh, year. One of the things, okay? Yeah, one of the things we would do is if, this would look like, would, like I said before, we lost eighty-five percent of the FTE when they went into the Great Lakes Bay Early College. With this program, they would, we would pay for approximately twelve credits their junior year, approximately sixteen their senior year. And then that fifth year, they would have pretty much a full, full load of classes. But we'd still be getting the FTE for that student, which is right now over eight thousand dollars. So, it's really a good program, I believe it's a good program that allow, would allow our students who want to start college early, the ability to do so. Right now, if a student wants to be part of an early college, what they're doing is they're enrolling in Windover High School in Midland. They're, they're going their school of choice and then they get into this Great Lakes Bay Early College that way. So, we've, we've had five, six, I mean, we've had several students in the program in the past. This would allow students in our district to take advantage of this early college model and it will allow us to retain more of the FTE, meaning the funding. The one thing we would still have to do, though, is when I, I want to meet with our policy committee, is that last, when we were in this Great Lakes Early College here for, this was some of our, um, rules we have for these students. Students in the program were not eligible to be their class valedictorian or salutatorian. Because they were taking college courses, they were, they're not going to, if they go that thirteenth year, they're not going to have their high school, um, graduation requirements fulfilled. So, that's something the policy committee, we're going to meet on Friday with the other suits in the ISD to see if we can be on the same page. Students may participate in athletics and co-curricular activities, so they would still be able to do those types of things because they'd still be, whereas before, they were a, actually a student in the Great Lakes Bay, they'd still be a Pin County student. Students may choose to participate in commencement with their graduating class, students may be identified as an early college student at commencements. So, what this is going to look like is you could have a student who comes in and is, as a senior, will be going another, a fifth year of high school at Delta and they won't really have their diploma yet because they'll still have a math requirement or maybe another class. So, we would, in the past, we would allow them to walk with their cohort group. We would hold their diploma until at a further time that they complete their program. So, but in the commencements, we would have an asterisk, maybe, early college person, student. Students in the early college will be responsible for their own transportation. Now, this is going to change because with this program, some of these are going to be offered through the Career Center to where they're going to dual enroll. Some of these programs are STEM-related where they would basically get credits, um, residential construction, automotive technology. So, if they go to the Career Center, they're going to get these, um, articulated credits with Davenport or Delta. And then there's also the ability for them to just simply work on getting an associate's and R. So, it gives them some different options and, um, but I think they will be, the transportation there, with their working on getting transportation, because these students would be going to Career Center, basically, and then from Career Center, they're going to try and get transportation to Delta. Or have classes at the Career Center. So, there's a few questions we still have to work out, but in essence, it's allowing these students, it's really not a whole lot different than dual enrollment right now because they can take four dual-enrolled classes as, as we speak. Students who enter the program remove themselves from being calculated in the class rank for their class at Pin County High School. Again, if they're in this program, they're going to be taking different courses, they're going to be taking college classes. We, again, the mindset before was these were different, they weren't fulfilling all our graduation requirements, they just want to be able to be built into our class rank. So, policy's going to have to mull that over a little bit. Students who transfer back from the early college may be come off track from graduating with their class. If they go there and they, they take these college credits, they don't come back and transfer and they may be come off track to graduate, which would be their own responsibility. So, those are some things I'd like to talk to the policy committee about, is there anything that jumped off the page for you right now? Paul, do you remember going through this first time with the early college, I mean, those were things we kind of put in place. Um, it's a little different, I guess if they were to take classes that were college classes and take them for, for college credit or for a grade point, you could maybe work them into the GPA, but again, you're still looking at a different time of graduation. Meaning, they're not going to have to fill their graduation requirements when they're a senior or at that, we take the Valsalem in grade point at the end of the seventh semester. So, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have, they'll be in a different spot in, in their career. So, maybe that's something we just have to think about a little bit. I, I have a feeling the other schools in the ISD are probably going to exclude them from class rank. Because the benefit is this, the trade-off is you're not going to have, you're not going to be in the class rank, but you're going to have sixty cred, college credits and you're going to, you know, you're going to be up to down the road with the school district and the ISD paying for the majority of your college, your first two years. So, there's, there's going to be a trade-off. And if that means they can't be calculated into the Valsalem or grade point, the benefit is all those credits and being able to be a lot further ahead than some of the other, the other students. So, I think it's a good program, I just, um, it's really, it'll be better because it's local, it's not through the, um, Great Lakes Bay and it'll also give us a little more control as far as funding this with, um, with, uh, basically through the dual enrollment portion of it. Any questions? So, I'm going to have the, I'll be contacting the policy committee once I get a better feel for what the other districts are doing. Okay, budget amendment, tonight we went through the budget. Budget committee met and we went over our, uh, what the amendment's going to look like. Chris and I presented it to the, uh, budget committee. Mr. Bauer, you're going to have a report for the board tonight?
Yep.
He'll report on that, so he'll give you the updates on that. Uh, second semester, believe it or not, here we come. We're looking at second semester, we have some half-days to finish out this week. We do have some staffing changes, we're looking at, um, we're looking at replacing Mr. LaBasser in the health PE department. And we also are looking at, um, we, we, Mrs. Ravish, I'd like to thank her for her service of coming back for a semester. Uh, we found a way to, to reduce some sections at the high school because some of the lower numbers to where we don't have to replace her for a semester. And, um, so we have a little bit of staffing savings, but we definitely need to, Mr. LaBasser, as you know, you, you accepted his resignation. I'd like to thank him for his years of service here at Pin County. He is going to be moving on to Elkton Pigeon Bayport, he's going to be a Laker, uh, starting second semester. We have had some interviews set up for that position, his coaching position and the teaching position. We're hoping to have a replacement, um, in the near future on that one. Any questions about any of the staffing? HVAC update, uh, I had met with, I talked to Tri-City Controls recently about getting some, um, controls for central so that their heat is a little more constant. We're going to be working on getting that number, working on helping the central become a little more, uh, I don't know how you want to say it, a little more comfortable, whereas we can control the temperatures. And I also would like to mention that, um, site committee, last year we had talked about replacing the boiler or potentially getting some units in the annex. And we have, we had a bid actually come in at like forty-two thousand for a boiler at the annex, but we, we made it very clear to them that this needs to be a, a small boiler that will keep that annex comfortable, but not, you know, not overdoing it with the boiler. We have a bid for fourteen thousand, nine oh two from Meals and that would allow for heat to be, continue to be in the annex. So, probably next board meeting, I will be putting that in front of the board to approve. Again, that would apply, uh, heat source in the annex where we have our varsity football locker room, we have equip, equipment storage. We have hitting, uh, we have our, our indoor batting cages out there and some, again, some other storage over in the, in the football offices. So, definitely you need to keep it above freezing. So, I have a couple other items that aren't on the agenda and I'm getting long-winded tonight, I know. But, um, one of the things that ISD has informed us is that they're upping their sub-rate for teachers and their, um, some of their parapros and some of their sports staff. They're going to a hundred dollars a day as opposed to eighty-five dollars a day, which I think everyone's going to follow suit within the district, otherwise it's going to be a, a bidding war. So, I'm going to be coming to the board next meeting to see for, ask for an increase from eighty-five to a hundred dollars per day. And, um, I mean, I don't know if there's any other way around it. It's hard to get subs, it's not good for kids right now, we have multiple administrators or teachers, um, being in classrooms where they're just not being covered and, you know, there's a, there's a chance if you don't have a qualified sub in there, you, you know, you, you could have some issues. So, we're, we may have to be creative as well, some districts are actually looking at, uh, retired, former retirees and paying them upwards of two hundred dollars a day. So, they come back, they know they're only going to be in one district. It's, it's been working for some districts, but we may have to have some incentives or some other things because it's just, it's hard enough to find a regular teacher, let alone a sub nowadays. Policy committee meeting, yep, we're going to talk about that. And then the last thing is January's Board Recognition Month. I'd, uh, like to thank you for your service that you put in, I mentioned something in my newsletter today. I also would like to, uh, next board meeting, have a small, uh, dinner, little appreciation dinner at six. So, if you can, um, plan on coming in an hour early next week, I know that, um, it would be well-received if you, if we could give you a little token of our appreciation. So, I know it's a lot of work for, sometimes a lot of headaches, but it's, it's not unnoticed. So, next week, next board meeting, if you can make it, Donnie will be in touch, okay?
Mike, any questions for Mike? Student rep report, Ms. Holstein?
Okay, so, regional leadership conference. Student Council will be sending four students to the regional leaders, leadership conference in Mount Pleasant on Wednesday, January twenty-second. Students will have the opportunity to present senior activities hosted by Pin County Student Council to leaders from schools across the state. Presenters also have the possibility for, of qualifying for the state conference at the end of February. Coming Home Twenty-Twenty. Coming Home is scheduled for the week of January twenty-seventh through February first. Events will be, will include a miniature building competition, daily dress-up themes, a penny war, a pep assembly, the crowning of the Twenty-Twenty Coming Home Kings, and the annual Coming Home Dance. I have brought the complete Coming Home schedule as well as a list of Coming Home coordinates, which, um, that's set up. Movie Night Twenty-Twenty. Student Council will kick off the Coming Home festivities with Movie Night on Friday, January twenty-fourth, beginning at seven PM. Movies will be played in each classroom with the freshman hallway. This free event is open to any high school students and included in all-you-can-eat popcorn community evening. Girls' varsity basketball. Pin County senior Lauren Lowers is just three points away from reaching one thousand points for her varsity basketball career. The girls' varsity basketball team will be home against Davenport on Wednesday. Game time is set for six PM. We encourage all community members to come out and witness Lauren reach this amazing milestone as our girls' varsity basketball team goes for their sixth win in a row. Semester one exams. High school and middle school students will be taking their semester one exams on Thursday and Friday of this week. Thursday half-day will feature exams for first, second, and third hours. Friday's half-day will feature the fourth, fifth, and sixth hours. Semester two classes will begin on Monday, January twentieth, twenty-twenty. Taste of Italy Dinner. The band researchers will be hosting their biggest fundraiser of the year on Friday, February seventh, from four to seven PM in the middle school gym. Tickets are nine dollars for adults, seven dollars for senior citizens, six dollars for children, and kids four and younger, E-Free, tickets are available. All-Star Band. Multiple students auditions, auditioned and were chosen to participate in All-Star Band, which will be held on Friday, January twenty-fourth and Saturday, the twenty-fifth, in Alpena. Jacob Stoner, who will be representing the middle school band. Joel Davis, Delaney Weber, Madison Bellotti, and Katie Gingrich will be representing the high school band. Senior Project Mock Interviews. The Senior Project class, which is a senior-only elective that focuses on post-secondary plans partnered with community members from various businesses to conduct mock interviews last Thursday, January ninth. Students are expected to dress appropriately for an interview and present the interviewer with a copy of the resume. Each interview lasted ten to fifteen minutes in length and each interviewer was given a rubric to help evaluate the students on their interview skills. At the end of the interview, the student and community member was over the rubric together, giving the student valuable feedback. Both the students and the community partners felt the mock interviews were a great success and Mrs. Moran intends to use this lesson again next year. Mrs. Moran would also like to thank her community members for their support. Lori Schuman of Branch Manager, United Bay Credit Union. Mike Stoner, Rotary and former general manager of Bay Metro Transit. Mike Stoner, Rotary and Former General Manager of Bay Metro Transit. Kim Crook, Senior Manager of Verizon. Bill Moran, Senior Director, Region Communications Charter Communications. Tricia Foley, Branch Manager of Independent Bank, and Kyle Wood, Head Principal of Pinconning High School.
Thank you, Lexi. Mr. Furman? Good, alright. Any other administrative staff?
It's Michael Liddit too. We do have exam week going on this week, and one thing I would like to make a note of is National Honor Society is putting out a luncheon for staff on Thursday, so thank you to NHS.
Any other staff?
Uh, we, I provided you with a copy of the proposal for the possible early senior graduation. It's been worked on by Mr. Woodruff and Mr. Managration myself. So the proposal is that the seniors would graduate early if they had met their requirements, uh, one through eight. Turning in paper, they need to apply for this, they need to be, have their fees paid, and, you know, three through eight. Um, it's in the handbook that they have to have the ninety percent attendance policy. They need to have their paperwork completed and submitted in, by April, by April sixth, it'll be available on the twentieth. Um, we're, we're hoping that it will prevent and, and. I guess, reduce some of the distractions that go on with the seniors for the underclassmen that are still focusing on their exams and the seniors, sometimes some of them check out early. And cause distractions for the last couple of weeks of school. Um, it's also been considered, or we're hoping that you will consider that, um, with the, if they're passing eighty perc, with an eighty percent or higher in their classes, that they will refrain and not take the final exams in those classes. Um, that's an extent incentive, um, I think it's a good incentive for them to be released early and to work more diligently maybe throughout the year instead of checking out, like, start at the beginning of second semester. For those that, some of them feel like, you know, we're to the end and we're getting close to being done. Um, so if we have, might have provided with you the application on the second page, um, and then that also, this is a letter that would go home to the families. And, yes, any questions?
Kyle's not here tonight. This, Kyle's actually brought this up at orientation for the students to give them an incentive to, to be able to graduate early. It's not uncommon, I mean, I understand they should let them out above four, five days or...
Basically, schools do it too.
Huh?
Yeah, basically, schools do it too.
And this, this quantifies it a little bit, and it, I don't think it needs more action because the students will have, I mean, it needs discussion and I guess if, if you really are against it, I don't think it needs action to move forward. Because these students would have fulfilled their graduation requirements. The state would allow this to happen if they have all their stuff done and they fulfill their requirements. This just quantifies it. Now, one thing I didn't talk to Kyle about is this eighty percent in the classes. I don't think, see that in here. Is, is it, is it because?
Yeah, it's not on here, but I like that idea too. I mean, they work hard and they maintain that grade and it's, yeah.
And I'm not sure if it's allowable to do that with eighty percent. If you're, if you're, if the thing is that they're passing the class with eighty percent or higher, they don't have to take the final, is that what the proposal is?
That's the proposal, yeah.
Because I think the Michigan merit makes them take a, an end-of-course exam.
I mean, there's other schools that I've heard that don't have to take exams, but they've done this as well. I don't know what their grade is that they have to have, so.
What I would, since it's not in writing here, I mean, I would consider this other stuff that's here, and I think we'd have to have some more discussion on the, the eighty percent rule. That might require policy or curriculum, that type of thing. But, um...
I like that idea too, as a reward for the kids too, if they've done well.
So do you have any trouble moving forward with the, this process or, I guess, more of an objection? Because they have, the parents have found out about it, they are gonna be able to sign up for it and apply for it, so. And Dwayne, is that how you understand it?
Yes. It's, it's amazing how positive the vibe has been from students. They've started to have conversations with us a month and six weeks ago already anticipating this, so. You know, we're, we're kind of hoping for a couple of things. Some of those end-of-the-school-year shenanigans, this may put a stop to some of those things. Behavior, a lot of incentives that students seem to be reacting very positively to.
The other thing it would allow for is, you'll notice that they have to be passing all their classes. If you're not, if they're not passing, sometimes we run into something where we have to pull a kid from graduation the day of. This would allow maybe that student who's not passing to have a little extra time to get those grades up, that type of thing, whereas the others can be drawn. So I can see where it would also help students who are maybe on that borderline of not passing their classes.
Should we schedule a policy committee meeting before we leave tonight?
Can we what?
Should we schedule a policy committee meeting before we leave tonight?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll... Yeah, we'll, we'll get one in before we leave tonight. Any other questions?
Thank you. Any other administrators? Alright, board committees, the budget met?
Yeah, budget committee met tonight before the meeting and we reviewed the preliminary nineteen-twenty budget and capital project updates and then targeted budget amendments for the next meeting. We did need to make some adjustments to the preliminary proposal, a couple line items involving capital projects, and we're asking for them to prepare a three- to five-year capital project list. So just to, you know, understand where we're at with this, we ended up with five less students lost than what we had planned for, and we did end up getting additional funding from the state. That allowed our budget to improve over the original amendments, so it will be favorable for the review in two weeks. But, you know, just as maybe members of the committee don't understand, in the last three years and with what we have forecasted for next year, we will be spending about a million dollars on improvements in the facility. Those improvements are focused on the student locations where they need to be for all students, so main focus was busing, so we're not stranding kids out on the roads in the cold. Central elementary upgrades, corridor roofs, things like that, heating elements, we've had a lot of things happen. So these, the amount of investment into this facility in a four-year period will be approaching a million dollars in this campus here. So, but we are prioritizing that to get the urgent and most needed things that can benefit all of the students. So there has been a student loss in the last three years that equates about seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars in, in funding. So that is important to know as we try to keep pace with our teacher salaries and keep up with the market around us. You know, you just need to understand that we are managing the budget to the best of our ability. And as usual, we will take some feedback, but the three-to-five-year plan will be the guide that we'll be following, and we'll be making improvements to the facility then.
Including the softball fields?
Yes, there is line items for softball, which I can discuss with people if need be, but, you know, understand that it is the whole district and the money has been going to the more critical needs. And we didn't take any money from the bond refinancing. So we could have easily taken four million dollars to our budget and been able to throw it out wherever we wanted, but we didn't do that. We gave it back to the taxpayers. And I think that that's important for the community to note that, that we're doing this out of managing a budget, so we're doing the best that we can to manage and we'll continue to do that.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Thank you. Non-consent agenda. Board committees, everybody has a copy. If there's something you either particularly want off of, please let me know. You can scratch your name off of it and hand me the sheet. Or if there's one you particularly want to be on, you can't cross them all off. If they're one you particularly want to be on, go ahead and write your name in that area, and I'll try to adjust as best as I can. Otherwise, I would intend to try to keep them as, as they exist. But not saying you can't move. Any questions on that? Alright, Ida B., first reading of the twenty-twenty-one curriculum guide. I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading, the twenty-twenty-one curriculum guide as presented.
Part.
Motion in support, any discussion? I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Mike Bauer?
Yes.
Nicole Jones?
Yes.
Chris Ravish?
Yes.
Paul Tommerville?
Yes.
Linda Anderson, yes. Mark Kuchar?
Yes.
Public comments, anybody like to address the board? Any other comments? Yes, sir.
I'm sure you change your policy before you implement this graduation stuff, because I know your policy don't include that.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. That, that's why we're here. Alright, any other comments at all for the board, from the public? Alright, discussion items from the board?
Just thank you to, to the staff that contributed to the cards today, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do.
Yeah, you like those, those are nice.
Yeah.
Alright, any other comments? If not, we have a closed session scheduled, I'll give a motion for that. So who? We have motion support, going to a closed session for attorney-client privilege. Any discussion? Not, a roll call vote, please.
Bauer?
Yes.
Nicole Jones?
Yes.
Chris Ravish?
Yeah.
Mark Kuchar?
Yes.
Paul Tommerville?
Yes.
Linda Anderson?
Alright, motion carries. Alright, we have concluded our business. Everything we're gonna do now is just attorney-client privilege. Thanks for coming on.
I wonder if I could be back with me. He flies right out that door, I'll take you all. Okay. Gotcha, okay. You gonna make it for the dinner next to me, okay?
Am I invited?
No.
Absolutely.